Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Mayor and City Council Public Hearing, Monday, July 28, on time, and we are discussing the Fourth Street Preserve Conservation Easement. Please mute your phones, or we will kick you out. No one's teasing, but do mute your phones, because it's hard to hear. The process, if you are new to come to one of our hearings, we are following a set script, and that is that first I turn to the city planner or the city manager, then the city engineer, if it's appropriate, and always the city solicitor that sets the stage. What are we doing tonight? And then we go right to the presentation. In this case, it will be the Greater Lewis Foundation and friends who will come forward. Then we go right to public, and then we go to city comments. What I would say to you as the public, this is your opportunity. You have a three-minute rule. We do not engage in public comment. We listen. So you can ask questions, you can do whatever, but we're not interacting with you, and I will hold you tightly to the three minutes to be respectful of everyone. When you come up to the microphone or the table, please say your name and your address, and then the clock will start. When the public comment period is finished, we then on council have an opportunity to have a back and forth. We'll be listening to the public. That helps inform our questioning, and then we'll be interacting with, in this case, GLF. Okay, so let's begin. I'll turn to the city manager, just giving, oh, and I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Khalil is trying to get here, and he's been trying to get here for about two days. He's in the West. His planes have been canceled every single time. So I think he may be landing at Philadelphia. So he apologizes. I doubt he will be here. He certainly wouldn't be here in good spirit, but he'll be listening to this hearing. Okay, to the city manager?
Okay, so the city is, as a partner of this project, has transferred a million dollars of resiliency funding towards this project. It's helped, project has helped to mitigate environmental impacts from storms. It's considered an open space. It will be considered a preserve and not a park, and that this will come under the newly formed Resilient Environmental Commission.
Thank you. And to the city solicitor, anything in particular of guidance to all of us on council?
Thanks, Mayor. So tonight is basically a public comment period for this. This is basically a public comment period for this project. Before August 15th, the city should decide whether it wants to engage in this project, and will provide notice to GLF at that point. But essentially, this is no action today. It's essentially time just to hear feedback.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I'll invite up GLF in whatever order you would like. There are several of them, but Mayor Ford, if you could start, that'd be terrific.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Jim Ford. I'm at 910 Savannah Road. I'm a member of the Greater Lewis Foundation Board and Chairperson of the Open Space Alliance Campaign. I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for holding the public hearing tonight, allowing us to address the questions and comments regarding the Fourth Street Preserve and its future. And as was mentioned, we keep in mind that this is a preserve and not a park. I'd like to also thank the mayor, city council, the staff, for all the hard work and your contributions and your partnership to our community and for this project, your support. And I'd also like to thank past members of city council for their efforts and their support, particularly one of us here tonight. Tonight, we have various persons involved in providing information and responding to the hearing. Chris Miller is here from, he's the deputy state forester. He and the forester Kyle Hoyt have been strong advocates for this project in creating Delaware's first urban community forest. And Chris can address questions regarding the details of the conservation easement document, should they arise. Rodney Robinson is also a member of the Greater Lewis Foundation Board, is renowned landscape architect, and has drafted the conceptual plan. It's not the final plan. And he will present this plan shortly. Mike Rawl, the executive director of the Greater Lewis Foundation, author of The First Setler of Lewis, along with Pam Castanze, the Open Space Alliance Campaign Director and person who's worked diligently for fundraising in our community. They will discuss the financial situation of how we got to where we are briefly and where we intend to go in the near future as well. I'd also like to thank the entire Greater Lewis Foundation Board, the Open Space Alliance team members, the public, and the business community for all of its support. It's just been a truly remarkable experience with so many facets of involvement, and it's not over. So we'll go to the first slide, Blue. So this is a real quick history in the general dates and timeframe. In the fall of '22, so approximately, not quite three years ago, we had an opportunity for the 30-acre site to be purchased and preserved under a conservation easement as the desire of the property owners and a conversation with the city to partner with us and to assume the ownership. Shortly after that, the campaign began on Earth Day of April 2023 to raise $8 million for this property. The campaign actually began as a joint campaign with Sussex County Land Trust for our Negren parcel, which is almost 90 acres right outside of the city. And we split the campaigns after a while and went our separate ways. And I believe they're on board to make their goal as well. But we had an $8 million campaign objective for this property. The conversation, as time went by, the Delaware Forest Service agreed to hold the conservation easement. And then in the late spring, early summer of this year, we were able to reach our goal and make our $8 million fundraising achievement. And you can see there the public funds of $4,000, $4,200,000. A lot of that came from the Delaware Open Space Council. Also, the Longwood Foundation contributed with grants, along with other foundations, Donaldson and other foundations, Welfare, and then private donations, as I mentioned earlier, from the community and work with our OS Open Space Team and Pam in particular, $2,600,000 in private donations in essentially 24 months of time. It's a pretty amazing statement for the people of the city of Lewis. I'll thank them again. This is just awesome. Okay, Blue. So here's our timeline. Some of this has happened and some is about to happen, hopefully. We, in June last month, the council, it might have been May, but anyway, the council approved the concept of the master plan that was presented, that Rodney presented along with Mike Rawl, went to Parks. We had a discussion at Parks meeting. So there were a couple of times where this was made public, and tonight will be another one, and it'll continue to be available. We have it on our website as well. Anybody has any questions to ask about them. The Delaware Forest Service presented the conservation easement and the contract to the city and to the Rollins Trust family that they're holding the property now for their review. Moving forward here, we are looking for the easement to be reviewed and approved by city council. I know it was mentioned by the solicitor on August 15th. If we had discussed possibly August 5th for that date to expedite the process, I believe there might already be a posted notice for a public meeting for that. It would be very beneficial. We're on a very tight timeframe to get everything together. You know, you can imagine transferring millions of dollars from different funds in different locations and getting everything pulled together from certain governmental agencies and private holdings and so forth takes time. And we'd like to meet our objective by September 15th. So if we can do that, we'd like to have the council review the sales agreement, finalize it, and take care of that if they are willing to do so as soon as they can. If not, we'll have to fall back and go to Plan B, which we don't have a Plan B, so. All right, September 15th is our estimated time for settlement. So with public funding and public involvement comes public access. And we have a proposal for some walking trails, a few benches and some signage in this. But the general idea is that this is a habitat preserve, and there's just very minor infiltration of the people in this area. The preserve will be managed land under the guidelines and qualifications of the conservation easement itself. So the language in the conservation easement will reflect what can and cannot happen there. So in the conservation easement, and was also the desire of the sellers, it needs to be clear that there's no structure to be built, or no buildings, no parking lot, no restrooms, nothing like that would be constructed there at all. So, you know, hopefully everyone understands that there are restrictions regarding building bricks and mortar. The conservation easement requires the city to submit a master plan within a year. Thank Chris Miller. I think the standard had been nine months, and he extended three months, giving us a little bit more of an opportunity to take care of that finalization of the master plan. So the concept that we're presenting in conjunction with conversation with the mayor is that the mayor would appoint an ad hoc committee, approved by the city council, to accomplish the finalization of the master plan that we have in concept right now. This committee would operate in full transparency, following the open public meeting policy. Citizens will have a significant opportunity to participate in these meetings. The plan needs to comply with all the regulations contained within the conservation easement. Mayor Marasco's intent, as was mentioned by the city managers, for the ad hoc committee to report to the environmental and resiliency committee prior to action by mayor and council. This committee would make up, certainly, it's at the full, the committee of the ad hoc committees at the full discretion of the mayor and city council for its representation and the individuals that it represents. But considering the details and the involvement of the public with this and with the preserve itself and what we need to do at the preserve, you would hope that there are members that are knowledgeable and skills relevant to the preserve, such as landscaping, the Master Naturalist Program, stormwater management, plant knowledge, and so forth, would be considered. The Master Naturalists have agreed to assist in the maintenance of the preserve, and we have ongoing public support for restoration funding, which will be discussed in detail in a little bit longer, or a little bit short time here. The public benefits, I think we've marketed this for the entire time we've been talking, and I don't think there's any surprises here to anyone of the environmental benefits that this 30 acres of preservation land will give to the city of Lewis. Habitat preservation that'll be there. We've had a lot of discussion about why can't you just leave it alone and let it be, and it is a managed parcel of land for the benefit of the community and for the benefit of the species that live there as well. If it was unmanaged, it would really go unbridled, and we would have additional complications and problems, in addition to the fact that public funds provide public access. We have an opportunity for blood prevention management, resiliency and stormwater management, addressing passive recreation, as you will see with Rodney's plan, is a minor influence on there with some trails, and certainly the educational opportunity. You know, getting here to this point, we've had a great relationship with Lewis Elementary School, which is very close by. We've had discussions with the middle school and the high school regarding opportunities for education there. And the Master Naturalist Program is also an educational opportunity through the Delaware Cooperative Extension. So with that, I will turn this over now to Rodney Robinson to discuss his concept plan. Rodney?
Rodney Robinson, and I live at 203 Canary Drive in Lewis with my wife. I want to describe the plan to you so you understand that what we're trying to do is preserve and protect this piece of land. It's not a forest yet. It lacks all of the, the parts of a forest that you would expect. It has canopy trees, but it doesn't have understory trees. It lacks a shrub layer. It lacks a viable herbaceous layer on the ground. All those things can happen, and the goal here with the master plan is to create a healthy indigenous woodland there. And that's going to take a few years. We have planned it to be about 10 years to get where we want to be. But it is going to be a public land, and people will want to visit it, and we want to enable people to take a walk in the woods. And to do that, we have developed this concept where there's a loop path. And I don't have a pointer, but there's a loop path that enters off, oh, thank you, magic pointer. Careful what you ask for. There's an entrance off of Fourth Street here, which is the old railroad alignment. Over down on the far left, there's an entrance down off of, keep going, keep going, keep going, down there, farther up, up, yep, there you go. There's an entrance there off of Canary Drive to come in. And so there's a loop path that, there you go, that loops around and connects these two ends. The path runs down the middle. There's a ditch that runs down the center of the property, and we want to keep people away from that. We also want to keep people away from the margins, because there are private residences on both sides of this. So the path runs down the center of these two spaces and curves around and approaches some of the bigger, better trees that are there, for example. And then along that path, there are areas where, because we have areas that are sunny, we have areas that are shady, we have areas with wet soil, areas with dry soil, or drier soil. Then we would take that advantage and begin planting trees and shrubs, shrub layer and an herbaceous layer. So you see these kind of light green wisps along the paths. Those are pollinator drifts. And rather than doing a pollinator garden, the idea is to put drifts of pollinator plants along the trail where people can enjoy them and see them and learn about them. The site has, if you look at the overall color, there's a kind of a cool green where the railroad track is, and then there's a warmer green over on the left side. That represents the nature of the soils and the water that we find in the ground there. So what we're saying is, what we have there is going to inform the forest that we encourage there. We'll have drop plants, trees and shrubs and so forth, that would do better and more of a drier upland kind of a soil versus ones that would grow in a wet soil with a root stamp. So we're going to get that kind of diversity, not only in the trees, but also in the shrub layer and understory and the ground as well. Along the trail then, and the trail is, it's a soft trail. It's not blacktop or concrete. It's a soft material. And when we get to the real design phase of it, we'll actually determine what that is. We're not specifying those kinds of things yet. I think we need to bring other people in and hear from some other people before we make those determinations. We suggested putting some benches in there, because people may want to stop and rest. And then there are, you see the little red flecks. Those are interpretive signs so that there would be information about what you're looking at, what's the nature of the, what are the plants there, and what's the structure of the forest? And why do you see things there that are different from somewhere else? So we want to encourage this diversity of habitat. On the far right side, right there, we are suggesting that we build a constructed wetland. The water comes out of that area and drains towards the canal. And we have to be mindful of that area, all of that water, and it goes into a single point, an eight-inch pipe. We want to be mindful of that. So if you start getting a lot of heavy rains and you've got a buildup, and we want to be able to control flooding and manage that better than it's being managed now. The thought is to create a wetland there, and that would hold the water, store the water, so we could release it at a smaller rate. The other thing that it does is it gives us a diverse habitat that we don't have on the site. We don't have a wetland, one that's open, and so that you get some sunny areas, you get some shady areas, you get a diversity of wetland species in there. That will bring in all kinds of wildlife that you would find in that kind of environment. The other thing is that around the perimeter, you see these kind of blobs. There's one there, there's another one. These are areas where clearly you can see the houses, the houses can see, and we want to create, we'd want to do planting on the perimeters that's dense. And that allows us to give privacy to the residents that are there, but also, you know, so people weren't looking in. But also, that creates, that gives us an opportunity to create cover for wildlife, say, which we don't have now. It's very open. It's overtaken by a euphorbia grass you see in there. And we want to have something much denser than that on the margins around it. And that will really increase the opportunity for various kinds of wildlife that we find in there now, but it'll give them a better habitat and a better home. So we get that kind of diversity in there also. The drawing across the bottom is illustrative only, and it's not a section or through a particular part, but it goes from the left, where you can see dense plantings, dense tree canopy, dense understory, all the way down to the ground. That would give you this privacy, if you will, and this dense habitat for the animals to occupy. Then you will have areas where it breaks open, and you'll let a little more sun in. That's important, too, because you get, with the increase in sunlight, you get a diversity of animals in there. You'll get a lot more insects. The birds want the insects, so they can feed on them. So they'll be nesting in the dense area in the left, occupying the edge condition and going in and out and in and out. Then you get into, in the center, you have a more open area where you have a higher canopy, and you get views, and you still have a good shrub layer, understory, but you have different spaces, different views, different levels of light coming in. And then on the far right, that represents what a constructed wetland would look like, where you, you know, you have not, it's not a pond, it's not, it's not permanent water. You have periodic inundation, and then it goes away. And the plants that occupy that are very specific to that kind of a condition. So we're getting this diversity, again, bringing this diversity in. And it would all be indigenous plants that would be put in here. Okay?
Thank you.
Mike Rawl, 16910 Lily Pad Milton. This is a little complicated, so bear with me. We'll go through the costs of the project and how the money's going to be spent. But first, I'd like to recognize Rodney for the extraordinary work that he's done on this. We've all learned a great deal. And of course, he's done it pro bono, at no cost, you know, to the project. So he's been a real treasure of forest. And I'd like also to recognize Chris Miller and his team from the Delaware Forest Group, who really helped close out this project and fulfill their vision of this being the first urban forest in the whole state that'll be a model. So we'll have other people visiting this and seeing what they can do, too.
Thanks, Chris.
With Rodney's help, we put together this chart that estimates a total cost of $825,000. This is not a sequential list of the order in which this will be done. That'll be up to the team. The eventual cost will be up to the team in terms of what you decide to do and how to do it. But the costs that we have, the estimates are for professional costs, the design, requests for proposals, fundraising, $65,000. The implementation, which is the construction of the trails, the bridges, the initial planting, site engineering, $300, the interpretation, which is the signage, fabrication, installation, $110. The new wetlands, we're kind of hoping that the design committee decides to do this early on in the project, because it's going to take about a year to do a groundwater study on the far east side. And that is a study that will determine basically how the levels fluctuate in the water and whether a wetlands is the appropriate solution to that, to managing that. You know, we think it is, we don't know. So requires engineers who have more experience than we can bring to it right now. The ongoing planting and maintenance, we've estimated that it's going to cost $35,000 a year to buy and install the plants and the trees and to maintain the property. And so this $825,000 includes $140,000 for the period 2026 to 2029. Now, our hope is that we can wrap up the fundraising aspect of this by 2028, so we can do it within two to three years. But we want to then have another extra year of funding provided. And I'm going to turn this over to our colleague Pam, who's done such a wonderful job helping to raise the money for this. I would just say, in terms of the work that Pam did, the private gifts, the strategy of the whole campaign was to create a foundation of private gifts that would motivate gifts, and it worked, you know, and it's all thanks to the work that she did. So she's going to explain how that last piece will come together and develop the ongoing funding for the project. Okay, thanks.
Hi, Pam Castanze. I live at 410 Mulberry Street in Lewis. So for this campaign, it's only 10% of what we raised in the last two years. So we do have a number of funding sources, as we did with the campaign to acquire the property. So of that $825,000, some of it will come from additional state grants, private donations, fundraising events. As Mike said, we're building into that $825,000, $140,000, so that we make sure that we have a good base for when the city takes it over, of funding in place for the first few years to get things started. And, you know, we expect that we will want to continue raising money for this property that, you know, a Friends of group or something of that nature with the city. We would work out some way that we can continue to hold events, things like, you know, the Race for Open Space and Rocking the Docks concert. They've indicated they want to continue doing that. So we already have some built-in fundraising events that that group could take over and move forward and, you know, raise $35,000 per year for the ongoing maintenance for the property. And I think that's it. We do have some plans, you know, Greater Lewis Foundation is doing some planning right now to do some letters and some end-of-year appeals. So we'll be raising money through that as well.
You're good. Can we just ask Chris Miller to come forward, just as the state, you're not commenting in a public hearing in terms of a public. We just want to better understand for the public that you hold the conservation easement. Just Jim described it, but if you can give a little more information.
So my name is Chris Miller, and I don't have a fancy Louis address or anything. So we'll just say the Delaware Forest Service and from Dover, Delaware. The state on this, the Delaware Forest Service, we're in the Department of Agriculture, and we will be holding the conservation easement for the city. So the city owns the property outright. They own it in fee. And then we actually have contributed, it'll be right around $3 million to it. But in turn, we get the conservation easement on the property to ensure that it'll never be developed. It'll never, there will be no structures on the property. And kind of what the outline you see in the conceptual plan is really what you're going to end up getting. It comes with strings attached, where we can do the monitoring. And if you guys aren't doing what you're supposed to be doing on the property, we have rights to enforce the easement. So. So all of it's in the documents in the easement that's been provided. Did you need anything else?
No, that's perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. Well, let's turn this over to public comment. And as I said at the beginning, when you come to the microphone, please say your name and your address, or come to the table. Blue will start your three-minute clock after you've done the address. We'll start with folks in the room, and then we'll see if anybody online would like to make a comment. So raise your hand, and I'll just call you up to one of the microphones if you'd like to make a comment. Yes, Barbara Curtis.
Well, someone's got to be first. Barbara Curtis, 17 Ship Carpenter Square. And first, I want to thank everyone involved. This is such a wonderful effort, and we're all going to benefit. I just had a couple of questions. When the slide went up on the conceptual master plan, and it had dates for reforestation that are in the past. And I wondered if that was a typo or yes? Okay, all right. Thank you.
It was a rip-and-winkle moment. Yes, really. Okay, anyone else? I'm sure there are others want to. Yes.
My name is Elaine Zimmerman. I live at 418 West Fourth Street. Just a couple of thoughts. One is, I guess my biggest thought is, this kind of hit everybody who donated lots of money, lots of money for us as individuals, to find out that it wasn't done and that people will be caught with more and more money to have to pay over so much time. So I'm wondering, I remember when we in the Overfalls Project, we hired Rodney. He gave us a wonderful plan, and we negotiated with him, and we turned it into something that was more affordable. So I would really wonder if there's any way that you have thought as city council of a way of negotiating. As he said, it was just a beginning. What did you call it? It's a conception, conceptual plan. And also, the other day, we were going down towards Prime Hook in the car, and there's a forest down there, right as you hit the marsh. It's great. Big, mature trees of all sorts, clearly one of those that's been there a long, long time. In my mind, that's the way I would like this to look, not a bunch of newly planted trees. But of course, it has to be a bunch of newly planted trees. I get that. But do we really have to buy every one of them and pay someone to plant them? Or can we do it like we've done so many projects in our town already? I mean, right now, we're doing the train, we're doing Fort Miles, we did the overfalls, we've done Lewis and Berlum. Is there a way that people who are losing their land and their trees due to all these subdivisions that are going in all around us, that we could take donations of plants that might actually work in this, in this environment? In other words, I would like to see some out-of-the-box thinking in order to bring the cost down and make it more palatable.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Elaine. Other comments? Yes, come forward.
I'm John Hoyt. I live at 311 West Fourth Street. And I happen to be a Delaware Master Naturalist. And I recommend anyone in here who cares about the natural world to think about becoming a Master Naturalist. It's not that hard. But one of the things we do is 40 hours of minimum volunteer work every year. So we are a labor source for this. And I would very much like to have this, because it's just a five-minute walk from my house. Because I do a lot of work with the Delaware Center for Inland Bays down in Ocean View, which is great. But on a good day, that's a 40-minute drive. On a bad day, that could be a four-hour drive. And by the way, we do reforestation work with them. So Master Naturalists, we've been out there planting trees and going back and surveying the trees. So we're a labor force, so keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, come forward. And Blue, can you check online for me? We have a lot of people on. Okay.
Helga Kajowski, and I'm at 105 Ocean View Boulevard. And I'm the lucky owner of one of the largest lots in Piletown Village. I have a couple of questions. Number one, will the wetland affect the drainage onto my property? Or am I far enough away from it? Will the deer plantings be monitored? Or what are you doing to let the stuff grow? Because they'll eat anything that you plant. There's about 24 of them out there. My other questions are, will we, will there be a fence of any kind? Or am I allowed to put my own fence to keep the deer and other four- and two-legged creatures out of there now that it's going to be, you know, public access? Because I live alone, and I'm a little concerned about security in the dark. And are there going to be limits on hours of access to the park? Thank you. Thank you to everybody who's worked, made this possible.
Thank you for your good questions. Thank you. Other comments in the room? Yes. Oh, yes, come on forward. Yes.
I'm Bill Geron, 3 Drake Knoll Road. I just want to say that I think the Fourth Street Forest Preserve is a real gift to Lewis. 18 acres of nature kept in the heart of town forever. I think it says a lot about our core values and about our concerns for future generations. And I just want to do a big shout out to all of the people who played such a great role in making this happen.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, I'm Marty Thompson. I'm at 3 Flamingo Court in Lewis. I'm also on the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm the Tree Commissioner. And I'd like to respond to just a few things. They weren't said, not all were said today, but I've seen them in the paper at all, and just my take on this. I love the idea of making this a natural forest. We need to have it visitors. It's not just because of the conservation easement. But we have a lot of people who don't know what a real forest looks like. And they'll go in here, and it's not just a bunch of tall trees. It's a lot of other things, as Rodney likes to point out. You have trees, you have shrubs, you have things on the ground, and that's what is good for wildlife. You need to have certain bridges and paths. It might take a while to get all that built. I get it. But if you don't, I've seen other places where they said, let's just keep it natural. Well, then people go where they don't, shouldn't be going, and you love the forest to death. And they get off the path, and that all has to be monitored. We may have to find ways to keep people on the path. I don't know. We'll see what happens. As far as funding, I really expect they'll find ways to save money. I'm aware of a number of grants we've used to plant trees under my leadership in Parks and Rec. And I've already started talking to Rodney about what grant opportunities might be available in the future when we have the, have the design nailed down. And I think there are ways, and there's even lots of ways to use natural masterless, master naturalists to plant the trees, so we don't have that contract. In fact, that's been done in Cape Pen Lemon State Park, where they get grants for the trees, master naturals for the planting, and it's low cost. So I think that'll happen. I think, I'm hopeful. It'll be a lot less expensive than what's on that board. We'll see.
Thank you.
That's it.
Other comments from the room? If, yes, come forward.
Hello, my name is Robert Ormsby. I live at 211 Ocean View Boulevard with my partner, Michael. And I want to also echo all the, thanks for all the work that Rodney and the rest of the team did for putting this, putting this together. I'll be short. I would encourage the city to include people of other, of additional background on the ad hoc committee that you're considering. There's other perspectives out there that can be, I won't say other, but there are additional perspectives out there that might be helpful towards developing that conceptual plan. So that's where my thoughts are at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I yield the rest of my time to Libby Owen.
She can have her full three minutes if she'd like. It sounds like we do want you to come forward, or at least the public does.
I'm Elizabeth Owen, 9 Jefferson Court in Lewis. First of all, I wanted, I want to reiterate what others have said relative to GLF and the campaign committee and the contributors to this project. I think it's phenomenal what's been done, one more time in Lewis, by the contributors. My concern, moving forward, is this has been presented to the community as a preserve. Now, I went to the Webster Dictionary, and people probably don't use dictionaries very much anymore, but I do. When I went to the dictionary, a preserve is "an area restricted for the protection and preservation of animals, trees, and other natural resources." Now, I understand the need to fall in line where the state has said we have to have a pass, and we have to have benches, and we have to have kiosks for information for the visitors of this preserve. I'm terribly concerned that this is going to become a problem area for this city. I live very close to the bike path, and there are all sorts of things that go on, on the bike path. And the city has not patrolled it. They sweep it, but we don't have the personnel to make sure that the bike path is being used properly. I'm very concerned that this ad hoc group that is developed take that issue into serious consideration. I think it's wonderful to say we're going to have a natural path for people to stroll on and sit on the benches if they want to rest. But I think we're going to need additional services from this city.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Others in the room? Okay, Blue, can you pull the, who's online? If you are online and you would like to make a comment, raise your virtual hand, and we will unmute you. Okay, the last call for the room. Okay, so we're going to keep the, we're, we now are going to have some questions, but for the public, you can always submit comments, because we are on a pretty fast track, as you've seen in the presentation. Comments would need to be in by August 4th, at what time?
4:00 PM.
At 4:00 PM. So we do read all those comments. So, and we, and we treat them with as much passion and consideration as those in the room. So if you have additional comments, or maybe something happened today that you heard that you have questions about. So thank you, public. We're not done, though, but you're, if you need to leave, feel free. But now it's our turn for the council to ask some clarifying questions. We'll have other times. And we have had times previous with GLF. But I'll turn to my colleagues first, and I'll start with Councilman Trina Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask a question Ms. Libby did bring to mind. But I had, I was thinking about this earlier, because I can't, couldn't remember if I read it or what. But would bikes not be allowed on the path? That would be my question.
Yes, I think in the, the, in the easement, it's in permitted uses. Give me one second to find it. Access rules. Preservation. Grantor may allow the following public activities on the project. Subject to such rules and regulations, the granter shall determine the sole direction, hiking, walking, and nature observation. So anything other than that would not be allowed.
I have a question.
That's it.
Okay. Councilman Ritter.
I have no questions at this time.
Councilman Elder.
I would just like to congratulate everyone for all of the hard work and successful work. I think this is going to be a great addition for Lewis. Thank you.
Let me make a few comments. Rodney, you're better than any of my graduate school professors in one session. I learn more from you. And I think it is important that, you know, if you're working in, in, whether it's gardens or forests, patience is required. And I'm really appreciative that the state is going to work with us for a year. Just a question, when does the clock start? Because I'm very mindful of what a year means. Is it when we sign? It's the September 15th? Okay. Okay. We will, I'll work with our city manager to have some kind of very short form if people are interested in the ad hoc committee, very short. We'll have something up on our website for the range of expertise that are needed. And I think I learned and listened to public safety being part of that, whether it's individual property or the whole, what that, what that means directly to the community. So we'll make sure that's, that's part of the ad hoc committee. On the constructive wetland, I just want to reiterate, it's a concept, and it's a very intriguing concept. And I agree with what Rodney and Mike and Jim have said. It's got to be early on in the process, so that we are making it a better situation, not a worse situation. And remember that a wetland is a natural way to actually address water, and it's upstream from the pipes in the canal. So if it works, it actually is nature's solution, which is what wetlands are and why we have buffers and other things on wetlands. So I think we've got to do that part as well. And I like on the master naturalist, I'm a master gardener and a tree steward, and I was daunted by the master naturalist program. So congratulations to those of you who are brave enough to do it. But that is a skilled volunteer base. And so the more we can involve you and shorten your individual commutes, we're all in. So other than that, I really thank the whole effort, as my colleagues have said. It's a testimony to our community, to nature, to looking at nature-based solutions. And, you know, we cut all these first things, the first town, the first state. And I would just say, we didn't pay these people to come, but I'm glad the state's here to listen to the support that you can hear and bring back at the state level, that we are excited to partner with you, and that this could be a showcase with all the development that's happening in Delaware. It's going to be pauses like this that are going to change literally our landscape. So we thank you for coming down as well to be here. Thank you all. With that, I'd like a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the hearing.
In a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
All right.
All right, hearing closed. Thank you.